Good morning, everyone, and we welcome you to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. And of course, all of this Zoom conferencing is due to our social distancing. So we thank everyone for practicing social distancing and participating in today's meeting. I would like to say a prayer and ask that you join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you in advance for comforting those homes that have been and families that have been impacted by COVID-19. We thank you that you're going to provide supernatural strength to all of the first responders and those that are in the healthcare field. We thank you in advance for the wisdom and the collaboration that we as elected officials will have for the sake of our citizens and businesses. And more importantly, we want to say thank you in advance for the joy, the peace, and the prosperity to all individuals, families in our communities. And all that agree in Jesus' name, please say amen.
Amen.
So at this time, before we begin the pledge of allegiance, we do need to ask for, I am asking for a moment of silence for Sheriff Deputy Detention Officer Grover Burns. He was killed this weekend due to an accident. So we do ask that you would please just bow your heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. We pray peace for his family and comfort.
Good audio.
So at this time, we will now say the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to hold up my flag that I have here and ask that you please join me. Yeah, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So at this time now, we will now call our Board of Commissioners meeting to order. So at this time, are there any changes or revisions to the agenda that has been published?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would like, I would like to remove the District Five appointment for the Water Authority from the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So can we consider that we have a request to remove that from the agenda? So do we have a motion to remove that from the agenda?
Yeah, so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, I see Commissioner Holmes for the second. Any discussion or comments? Let's see, I can't see Commissioner Wilson. And I can't see Commissioner Holmes to confirm the vote, but we can just say yes. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, I see myself raising my hand, Commissioner Barn, Commissioner Clemmons, I heard Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Wilson. Any statement?
Chair Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Wilson just turned his video on. Commissioner Holmes needs to start his video and then you'll be able to see him.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor, raise your hand, please, so that we can be seen. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, I didn't see your hand. Okay, so we at least had four, so that was a quorum. Any opposed? Please raise your hand. Okay, I see no opposition. So the motion carries. So County Clerk, did you see that for record?
I said only four raised their hand because I thought everybody raised their hand. Is it five?
Okay, Commissioner Wilson raised his hand, so it was four at the time, and that's a quorum, so that's good enough.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We will now move into the next agenda item, which is to appoint retired Judge James Chafin III to serve on the, as an appointment to the McIntosh Trail for the term of March the 17th through April the 2nd, 2022. So that request for an appointment has been made. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, we see Commissioner Barn make a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Holmes made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. So one, two, three, okay, five. County Clerk, can you confirm that vote?
Yes. Commissioner Barn made the motion. Commissioner Holmes seconded unanimous, 500.
Okay, thank you. So at this time now, we are moved to the next agenda item, which is to approve the, to discuss the proclamation for the 2020 Fair Housing Month. So I'm not sure who's making that proclamation request, so at this time, can someone make that request, that proclamation?
Chair Wood, the clerk will be presenting the proclamation.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Braun, County Clerk. Will you please present that proclamation?
The proclamation is for the National Fair Housing Month, whereas in April of each year, the United States of America celebrates the signing of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 enacted under President Lyndon Johnson, following the aftermath of the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas Title VIII of the Act is commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enunciated a national policy prohibiting discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, and as amended disability and familial status. Whereas April 11, 2020 marks the 52nd anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas National Fair Housing Month is observed to increase efforts to end housing discrimination and raise awareness of fair housing rights. Whereas fair housing is an ongoing campaign to offer support and assistance to residents who are facing and/or receiving ill-mannered and unjust discrimination. Whereas efforts to affirmatively further the Fair Housing Act serves to educate homeowners, tenants, realtors, property managers, and landlords of their rights and responsibilities under the federal and state Fair Housing Acts. Whereas diverse inclusive communities with access to good jobs, schools, healthcare, transportation, and housing are crucial to the prospering of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that our commitment to fair housing is a living commitment, one that reflects the needs of America today and prepares us for a future of true integration, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia, to hereby join in the national celebration by proclaiming April 2020 as National Fair Housing Month and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Henry County, Georgia, to abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law. Signed by Chair Wood, Chair, Henry County Board of Commissioners, attested by Stephanie Braun, County Clerk.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that proclamation. And so we thank you for that, and we will continue to honor the 2020 Fair Housing Month. Before we move further into the agenda, I just want to make sure that we have covered the acceptance of the agenda. I know we had one modification that was when I looked to our county attorney. Are we still in compliance, sir?
I would recommend that you go ahead and do a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. So at this time, we want to confirm that our agenda is approved and accepted. We did have that modification to remove the District Four appointment to the Henry County Water Authority. We have made the appointment to the McIntosh Trail and just discussed the proclamation of the 2020 fair housing market. So I now accept the motion to move further into the agenda and to accept it as been published with those modifications and actions. So at this time, we'll take a motion.
Chair Wood, I have a question.
Yes.
You said District Four, District Five, the appointment to the Water Authority.
If I said District Four, I intended District Five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, just to make sure that we're in compliance. I'll now accept a motion to accept the agenda as stated and to move, proceed further.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, and I saw Commissioner Barn with his hands raised. Any further questions or comments? All in favor to accept it and to move forward? Thank you. That is five to zero. Thank you. Okay, as we continue to move forward now, we'll invite up our Deputy County Manager, Mr. Brad Johnson, for the recognition of county employee retirements. Okay, you have muted, Mr. Deputy County Manager, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry there, Madam Chair. As we continue to learn this process.
Yeah.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Hope you are well this morning. So I'm here this morning to represent the retirees and, and we had three retirees in the past month that retired from Henry County, from Team Henry. The first one was Italian Chief Barry Cooper with Henry County Fire Department with 30 years of service. The second one was Thomas McLean, Tommy McLean, he's one of the shift commanders for the Fire Department with 22, 23 years of service. And also Sherri, I'm not sorry, Sharon Bruno from 911. It says 22 years of service, but she did have a break in service, but she had probably around 30 years of service totally in her tenure with Henry County. And as we, as these employees take the next step in their next chapter in their life, the next step, we want to wish them well and thank them for their team effort, thank them for the input, and thank them for the over almost 90 years of continuous service to the citizens of Henry County combined. So thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me recognize them. I hate their connect be here in person because of the situation, but we want to congratulate them on their retirement and their next phase in their life. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And again, we too want to commend Mr. Cooper, Mr. McLean, and Mr. Bruno for all of their many years of service and do, again, wish them the very best. And after we get through this COVID-19 experience, maybe they'll be willing so that we can recognize them in person as well. So thank you again.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And your retirements. So thank you. So at this time now, we will turn this over to our County Manager, Ms. Sherri Hopson Matthews.
Good morning, and again, thank you, Board. I do know that Commissioner Thomas is having some issues trying to get on. I think she can hear and see, but she can't see anyone. So she is trying to get on the call, so I just wanted to make the board members aware of that. Under County Manager's comments this morning, I do want to provide a couple of updates, specifically a COVID-19 update from an operational standpoint. And then also, we're going to hear from our EMA Director on some updates in terms of what we're doing from an emergency management standpoint, in addition to some of the efforts that have been made to support Piedmont Henry and some of their requests. As you all are aware, we are three weeks into our COVID-19 telework protocol. And as a result, we have a large number of our employees that are teleworking from home. What we are doing is we are trying to at least create as normal as an environment as we're able to create. And so we do have members of our staff that are from eight to five manning our phones, responding to emails, following up on correspondence that's coming in, because we do recognize that we've got to have some degree of business as usual. As a reminder to the Board, the Building Department is conducting inspections. I know we've kind of gone back and forth in terms of what that will look like. And so our staff is actually in the office two days a week, on Tuesday and Thursday this week, because we do have a county observed holiday on Friday, which is Good Friday. So they're in the office this week conducting inspections. As a reminder to the building community, we are asking that all of your plans, or plans that need to be reviewed, or any permits that you're requesting, that those be submitted to the Building Department no later than 12 noon on Friday, so that we can have the following week to go ahead and pull that information and be prepared for inspectors to conduct those inspections. Our inspectors are actually not coming into the building. They're actually set up where the plans and all of the permits are set in a box for them to pull from outdoors, and then they are pulling that information and then going out into the field to conduct those inspections. A couple of things before I've turned it over to Don Ash. There had been some questions raised regarding small businesses and specifically what the county could do to assist with our small businesses that are here in the community. Shannon Sengio actually was on a phone call or conference call yesterday with HUD, and she contacted me last night and indicated that HUD would be allocating CDBG funds in the tune of about $50 million total throughout, throughout all of the HUD recipients. And so Shannon is in the process of trying to develop some applications to assist with that. Now, I want to be clear in that the funding that we're going to receive will be utilized for public services. And so what that means is that small businesses, individuals who may need assistance with mortgage payments, utility payments, any type of rental assistance, we will be looking to accept applications for that as well. In addition to food banks will now have an opportunity to request funding. What's new to this is that small businesses is now an eligible activity under public services. And so I know a number of commissioners had inquired regarding what can we do for our small businesses. At this time, Shannon will have to amend the annual action plan that was previously approved by the Board, and it will require a new approval from the Board. Because of advertising requirements, the earliest that we'll be able to get this to the Board will be the second meeting in May. And so what Shannon is trying to do in the next couple of days is to develop what the application process will look like, what the requirements will be, and as soon as that information becomes available, we'll be sure to share it with all of the commissioners and share it on our social media page as well. And then finally, before I turn it over to Don, there had been some conversation regarding, specifically Commissioner Clemmons had requested us to visit hazard pay for our county employees, specifically those employees that are on the front line. After about a week of reviewing some of the policies and procedures, not only within other jurisdictions, but in looking at how other communities are handling hazard pay, we are recommending that the Board authorize me to utilize the use of fund balance for providing hazard pay to our frontline employees. Now, what this means is that we will create two levels. We will have a Level One, which is our Police Department, E911, Fire Department, our inspectors that are going out into the field, those that have a direct impact or the potential of having a direct impact with a COVID-19 patient. And then we'll also have a Level Two, which are those individuals that are having to come into the office and could have some exposure to those individuals. So your Level Ones, again, are your Police Department, Fire, EMA, E911, Meals on Wheels providers, because they are having a direct impact with individuals that could have the potential of having COVID-19. And then on the Level Two side, we're looking at, again, those individuals that may be permit clerks that are in the office processing permits, parks and rec staff that may be out in the field making sure that our parks are still being cleaned, although the parks are closed, we still are having people that are frequenting our parks. And so we want to make sure that we are taking care of all those employees, again, that could potentially have some impact or have some degree of an impact on unavailable or unavoidable risk. For Level One employees, we are recommending a $2.50 per hour, per hour to their hourly salary. And for Level Two employees, we're recommending a $1.50 per hour. The reason we looked at doing an hourly rate versus just a standalone supplemental amount is because we want to make sure that we are actually capturing those employees that are working those hours. So as it stands today, all of our county employees who are full-time employees, they are being paid. They are being compensated bi-weekly for their hours that they're working either from home or being, or working in an assigned, for an assignment. For those employees that are physically coming into the office, or for those employees that are physically responding to calls, answering calls, those employees will be paid under the Level One classification. Based on just some quick numbers, we are expecting that this should cost the county no more than $800,000, but we're very confident that it will probably be much less than that. The great part about what we're presenting to the Board is that we have funds available in our fund balance that we can use for this one-time expense. What we're recommending is that the effective date of the hazard pay will be on March 18th, which was the effective date of our emergency declaration, and that it will go through April 21st, which was the termination date for our shelter in place. If we decide to extend that shelter in place beyond April 21st, then we will look to extend the hazard pay. But what we didn't want to do is just give a blanket hazard pay would start now and go until December. And so we're looking to look at those days. What I would like from the Board this morning is, one, to hear from you all to make sure that this is in line with what you all would like to see for hazard pay, and then authorize me and our financial services team and HR team to proceed with developing what that looks like and then proceed with making sure that those employees are compensated as all the things behind that level. At this point, I.
And at this point, I'm sorry, County Manager, you went kind of into a blurt moment as you were speaking about, what did you want from the Board today to authorize you to do? Something went kind of under the water, so if you'll restate that, that would be good and see if that's.
Absolutely. Can you hear me now, Chair?
No, ma'am.
Okay, give me one second.
Okay. We can't, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
What about now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, and so I will repeat, I think the latter part of my conversation. What I'm looking for this morning is, one, for the Board to either give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down in proceeding with the hazard pay, with the recommendation that we do provide the Level One employees with the $2.50 per hour increase, and then for the Level Two employees, a $1.50 per hour increase, with the understanding that this is an emergency, one-time expense. The only thing I need is for the Board to authorize me to proceed with identifying those employees, and then I will bring back a resolution to perfect the record, but I will not exceed more than $800,000 for the total, which would carry us actually beyond April 21st. It would take us to May 18th if I were to, or get to the $800,000. So at this time, I'll yield for any questions that the Board may have.
And before you do that, what I'd like to do is request a modification to the agenda to actually add this hazard pay proposal as a new agenda item. So at this time, I'll accept a motion from the Commissioners to modify the agenda to add this as a discussion, actually discussion and resolution item.
Move to modify.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Holmes has a second. Any further discussions and comments regarding adding this as a new agenda item? All in favor, raise your hand, please. And I, we welcome Commissioner Thomas to the call as well. So it looks like that was a unanimous decision. County Clerk, confirm that motion and, and that, a motion and vote, please.
There was a motion made by Commissioner Clemmons and a second by Commissioner Holmes. It was unanimous, 600.
Okay, and it is to actually modify the agenda for resolution regarding hazard pay. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, so at this time, that has been approved, the agenda has been modified to add this agenda item. So are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners? Okay, your volume is a little down, Commissioner Thomas. We could not hear your question very clearly.
Okay, tell us, try it again, Commissioner Thomas.
What level would you say the first responders are? Because I can't hear the meeting. I'm hearing the breaths.
So Commissioner Thomas's question to, to me is what level would the first responders be? And the first responders would be Level One, which would be the $2.50 per hour increase. You're welcome. Commissioner Thomas is able to see the video, but Commissioner, she is not able to hear the video. So we're having to transmit her questions through a cell phone, so please bear with us on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Commissioner Thomas?
Anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
She's on.
Not at this time, Chair.
Okay, I just have one question. You mentioned this would be for full-time employees. Would this apply to any part-time employees? Are any part-time employees being included?
So currently, we are paying part-time permanent employees. So our Meals on Wheels employees are considered part-time permanent, and yes, those employees would be included in the hazard pay. For part-time, non-permanent employees, those employees are not currently being compensated. So those are your school crossing guards and currently anyone that works in a recreational, like summer camp-type program here at the county. But other than that, all employees are being compensated.
Great, thank you. And then one other question, can you confirm the dates again? Because our declaration, I think, is noted to be March the 17th, and can you confirm the start and end date of this hazard pay again?
So I may have misspoken, so it should be March, it's the effective date of the declaration, which will be March 17th, and it will go through April 21st, which was the term date for the shelter in place approved by the Board last week.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the Board? Okay, here and now, I'm seeing now, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the authorization to give the County Manager the approval to proceed with the hazardous, hazardous pay.
Move to approve the hazard pay.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there, okay, I heard a second from Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussions? Okay, Holmes, did you, you had your hand raised?
I think he did a second after Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Any discussions, comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Okay, and that is.
Are you in favor?
She got a hand ready.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, thank you.
County Clerk, can you confirm that motion and vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Clemmons made a motion to approve the authorization to give the County Manager approval to proceed with the hazard pay, to be paid out of fund balance. Commissioner Wilson seconded it. The motion was unanimous, 600.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, County Manager, any, I know we're going to move now to EMA Director, Mr. Ash, or you had any of the comments at this moment?
That's it. At this moment, we're going to move to the EMA Director, Mr. Ash, and then I will ask the County Attorney to provide an update to the Board regarding the governor's shelter in place versus the, or not versus, but in comparison to the county's shelter in place.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Hold one second, please.
Okay. Okay, I see that Mr. Ash has joined. Oh, there he is. Okay, welcome, Mr. Ash.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just want to provide you an update, just to go over a couple of numbers and provide you some information. As of 6:00 PM last night, through the Georgia Department of Public Health, the state of Georgia had 7,558 cases of COVID-19. Of those, 1,393 were hospitalized. The state of Georgia have had 294 deaths from COVID-19. So let's talk specifically for Henry County. Henry County currently has 181 cases of COVID-19, resulting in the three fatalities. One of our biggest stakeholders in our county is Piedmont Henry Medical Center, had an opportunity to talk to their CEO, Dr. Henson. She shared with me currently that Henry, Piedmont Henry has 47 positive cases of COVID-19. They have, of those 47 cases, 25 are in ICU. 20 additional cases are pending investigation, so they're on the investigation of COVID-19. Last week, the hospital made some moves. One of the things they did is they converted IMCU to ICU unit. This week, they're working to turn a medical service unit into an ICU unit, which will give them an additional 60 beds for ICU. They will continue to expand as the need arise for ICU beds. Currently, they're working with us to provide them resources through the State Operations Center and the Public Health Department. We are working on a request for them this morning for a critical need for HEPA filters. So our team is working through the Department of Public Health and the State Operations Center to deliver that request. Another thing I wanted to mention to you guys, as we talked about COVID-19, there's a lot of concern about our nursing home facilities. I'm glad, I'm glad to tell you this morning, I had contact with Westbury and McDonough. They have no current cases of COVID-19, and they're utilizing PPE throughout that system and isolation. So we're excited, we're really glad to hear that good news from them. As the EMA, we're continuing to resource all our PPE or our public safety team and our critical departments that are out serving the public as well and our jail facility. We have provided some additional support to our Transit Department, Animal Control, and Meals on Wheels to make sure those guys are covered. We continue, just like the state of Georgia and the country, we're encouraging our citizens to shelter in place, limit their travel, and most importantly, follow those basic rules, washing your hands, social distancing. Those are the things that are going to get us through this event. I'll be glad to take any questions you guys have this morning.
Okay, thank you. I've got one, but I'll see what other questions that the Board may have. Are there any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you. I've got one, but I'll see what other questions that the board may have. Are there any questions from the board? I see Commissioner Barron raised his hand, then Commissioner Clemmons. Okay, Commissioner Barron.
Yes, Don, you mentioned that the hospital's got capability of adding another 60 beds at the hospital. Do we have enough ventilators at the hospital to supply the need?
So Commissioner Barron, what we've done over the past couple of weeks, we have been able to fill requests for the hospital. They've sent us several requests for ventilators and we've been able to outsource them through the Department of Public Health and Georgia Emergency Management to get that additional equipment in. And one of the things about Piedmont is a network system. So they're able to get additional resources from sister facilities as well.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
Don, I have a question about the numbers for Henry. Are those numbers counted based on the residence in which these people live or are they based on the people that come into Henry Medical Facility? I need that answer because I know that in our hospital, and I've talked to the past CEOs several times about we basically the hospital for us, but Spalding and a lot of the other rural areas around us. So it doesn't necessarily mean because they're in Henry Medical that they're Henry County residents. So that's something I really would like clarified on how they're coming up with Henry numbers.
Sure. So Piedmont Henry is a regional hospital that serves multiple counties. The Department of Public Health, the residents are tied, the cases are tied to where their home residence is. So those 181 cases I spoke of are confirmed Henry County residence cases.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Clemmons?
No, that's good. Thank you, Don.
Any other questions?
I was kicked out, Don, so I pretty much missed about 50% of your presentation. You just answered one of my questions, the questions that Dee just asked, but how many deaths have we had? I mean, I know you mentioned last week that there were a couple. Have we had an increase?
So we've had a total of three fatalities related to COVID-19 in Henry County.
Okay, and then my, my last question is regarding testing. I've asked you and also Sheri, is there a possibility that we can test at our clinic?
I want to address testing first.
So Sheri is going to directly, directly address the question about testing at the clinic. I can tell you the way testing is working for us as a district. We're in District Four that makes up 12 counties. And currently, they have a designated site in Calleita that serves the entire area. Now, we do have the opportunity to public health to move a person to the Clayton test site. But currently, we don't have a designated test site through public health in Henry County. And I'm going to let Sheri address the second.
Commissioner Holmes, we have been in contact with Healthstat, who is actually the provider over at our health clinic. And Healthstat was contacted a couple of weeks ago, indicating that they would possibly receive some test kits. The challenge with that is Healthstat is nationwide. And so they're sending those test kits to areas in which they're having higher numbers. So as of today, we still have not been allocated any test kits through our provider to conduct those type of tests over at the clinic. We will continue to follow up to see if we're able to get some test kits. But what I've been told is that they're really focusing in those areas where they're seeing a higher number of cases. But I'll certainly follow up and provide that information back to the board.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, and Commissioner Holmes, I'd like to add to that is that the local Board of Health has been advocating very strongly to get actually testing sites in here in Henry County. Fortunately, at first, it was only directed to Calweda County. And fortunately, because of the Board of Health's application, we got at least approval to begin some testing in the Clayton County, because that's much closer than going to Calweda County for those that were directed there. But we are still strongly advocating for testing here in Henry County, just for the convenience of our citizens. So just do know that that is still continuing to be a focus. The, so I see Commissioner Clemmons to come afterwards. One question I have for Mr. Ash is do, how are we addressing concerns of COVID-19 with the homeless?
Thank you, Chair Wood. So what we've done is we're working with our partners, like connecting Henry and identifying a homeless population. Once we identify them and specific needs related to COVID-19, we're working with our public health partners that have designated facilities and lodging areas where these people can be housed and treated. And we will work that throughout the Department of Public Health.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, those are the only questions I have at this moment. Commissioner Clemmons?
I would just like to say to Commissioner Holmes, I asked the same question about testing sites, but Henry seems to still be on the low end of minimal cases compared to the Clayton County North areas. And so, you know, the Department of Public Health has said that they're going to place it in the high hot areas first. So I guess if Henry becomes a high, and Don, you can come in on this. Comes a high, hot area, then they will look more at Henry. So if you could just elaborate a little bit on that, Don, about how they were collecting. And I think the three deaths were people with underlying conditions and they were older people. So Don, talk a little bit about that so that our citizens will know where we are on the, on the poll to rank among what's happening in the state.
So from the information, we're given very limited information from public health on the cause of the fatalities. On these specific ones, I would have to check with public health to make sure they did have underlying factors. I will tell you, in reference to, you made a valid point about hotspots. Just with every resource coming through public health and GMA, they are diverting it to the most significant needed areas. We are fortunate that we are getting all the resources we're asking for. I didn't mention in my report, but I can tell you that of our municipal governments and the county, we don't have any current unmet needs for them. But yes, they are using those resources in the spots that are most critical.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemmons?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Holmes, I see your hand.
So, so, so Don, how do they evaluate what areas are hotspot? Because I mean, if you don't have testing, how do you know if an area is a hotspot or not? I mean, we could have, we could, we could have hundreds of COVID, COVID patients here in Henry County, but nobody has the ability to get tested. So, so how are they coming up with that, you know, that, you know, that? But how are they coming up with that?
So I, I would definitely refer to the Department of Public Health, but they use guidelines specified in cases that are confirmed to project future cases. And those are the modeling they are using currently that we are aware of.
Okay.
All right, and, and Mr. Ashton, please help me with this if necessary. If anyone is interested in seeing the daily reporting of confirmed cases throughout the state and by county, please go to dph georgia.gov/covid-19-daily. But basically, go to the departmentofhealth georgia.gov, and it is actually reporting all of the data daily as to the number of cases, the number of deaths, and even it's given information about the profile or demographics of those that have transpired or transpired because of COVID-19. So that is good information. So Mr. Ash, is that a correct statement? I just wanted to confirm.
That's correct. And also be mindful that that site is updated twice daily, usually around noon time and later in the afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Okay, well, we thank you, Mr. Ash, and we appreciate all that, that you're doing as our EMA Director and all of those that are involved on the hours task force. So thank you again for all the collaboration that we see. All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll now move into, I think, our county attorney that was positioned to next speak to us about the governor's executive orders and relative to our local ordinances that have been passed. So County Attorney Patrick Jockster, you now have the mic.
So good morning. I don't want to confuse things by referencing back and forth between the state and the county order. I'm only going to talk about the state order because it's the one that's in force right now. So the governor on April 2nd issued a statewide shelter in place order. What that order does is closes the following businesses. Gyms, fitness centers, bowling alleys, theaters, live performance venues, operators of amusement rides, body art studios, cosmetology shops and schools, which would be hair and nail salons, estheticians, hair designers, massage therapists, and bars. Those are the only businesses that are specifically closed. Restaurants are limited to takeout, drive-through, pickup, or delivery services only. As, as regards the shelter in place, all citizens are required to shelter in place, required to stay in their home unless they leave for a permitted use or a permitted purpose. Those permitted purposes include exercise. You're allowed to leave your house to go exercise. If you work in a business that has not been closed, you are permitted to go to and from work. You're permitted to go to and from medical care appointments. You're permitted to go take care of the medical needs of family members. You're permitted to go grocery store shopping. You're permitted to go to essential businesses or any businesses that remain open. All businesses that remain open are classified into either infrastructure, basically required infrastructure, or all other businesses. And that distinction isn't terribly important. It's important for the measures they're required to take. So the, the governor's order lists 20 protective measures that businesses must, must take, must ensure to protect the safety of their, of their employees, customers, or clients. And then if you're critical infrastructure, there are 16 protective measures that one should take. Otherwise, businesses can remain open. So if, if people have noticed that businesses aren't closing, that's the specific reason is they're allowed to remain open under the governor's order. And this order is in effect right now until April 13th. Unless the governor extends it or modifies it between now and then. And at that time, when this order is no longer in effect, at that time, the county's order can go back into effect.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions from the board regarding that statement from our county attorney? I see Commissioner Holmes.
Hey, Patrick, you know, I've gotten a lot of, oh, actually, a number of calls regarding police pulling over citizens and asking for them to show them their essential paper. And is that, is that something that's actually happening in Henry County?
It's not my understanding. It's my understanding that the, neither the police department nor the sheriff's department are making those types of stops. It is, I've heard a lot of similar rumors. I've heard rumors that there are roadblocks and people getting pulled over to, you know, ask for papers and that there are curfews. None of those things are in effect. And I do not believe, perhaps Brad can confirm, but it's my understanding that we are not making stops for the sole purpose of checking to make sure people are unauthorized to travel. We are, I do believe, continuing to enforce traffic laws. And so, and that may be a question that's asked. If you get pulled over for a traffic stop, where are you going? Or where have you been? That may be asked. I think that's probably asked routinely on traffic stops already. But I do not believe that the police department or the sheriff's department are making specific stops to enforce this order.
Brad, have you, have you heard that rumor anywhere in the metro area?
No, sir. I have not heard it. And especially here, Chief Amerman actually sent out a a trading video that we're definitely just an education for businesses and we're definitely not pulling over or doing roadblocks for, for our citizens. Now, as Patrick said, if they, if you get pulled over for a routine stop or infraction violation, they ask you why you're out. But I have not had anybody, any of our training or any of our, our meetings are, are acknowledged that we are going to be asking for papers or any essential personnel papers. So I, again, I haven't heard any of that, Commissioner, in Henry County.
All right, and Commissioner Holmes, I do want to confirm that I too had a caller too about that very same thing. So we thank you, Mr. Johnson, for clarifying that, so.
So that's all I wanted to do. I wanted to clarify it for the public.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments regarding COVID-19 at this point in time? Okay, well, we'll go back to our county manager just to see if there's anything else to be discussed or covered during the county manager comments.
I'm sure what, not at this time.
Okay, well, thank you. And we again appreciate all the work that's been going on, especially with all of our employees. So thank you again. And keeping the services provided for our citizens.
Thank you.
We will now move into the consent agenda, which we have two, a couple of resolutions to, to discuss. The first one is from the Accountability Court. Then this resolution is authorizing the applications submitted for grants from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice, Courteidate and Council for fiscal year 2021 for the following courts. For the Adult Felony Drug Court, for the Mental Health Resource Court, and also for the Veterans Treatment Court. The next resolution on the consent agenda comes from the Henry County Police Department regarding a resolution to Accept the Violence Against Women Act grant in the amount of $70,000. The next item comes from Stormwater, which is a resolution accepting the Condole Environmental Management Grant from the ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation at an amount up to $2,662.32 to employ an intern for the Henry County Stormwater Department, and approval of additional match funds in the amount of $665.58 to be paid out of Stormwater Fund. The next resolution comes from the SPOSS Department, which is a resolution authorizing Chair to execute the L-MIG application for the Turner Church Road at State Route 20. And then the final item on the consent agenda is a resolution from Fleet Services is a resolution approving vehicle and equipment surplus list on Exhibit A and authorizing the purchasing directive to dispose of said items through online auction process via govdeals.com. So those are on the consent agenda item. Are there any items that the board requests to be removed for further discussion? And I'm hearing now, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I see a motion from Commissioner Holmes. I saw Commissioner Barron raise his hand. Are any further discussions? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, county clerk, will you confirm that motion vote, please?
Commissioner Holmes made a motion to approve the items on consent agenda. Commissioner Barron seconded. The motion was approved unanimously, 600.
Thank you. We will now move into item 10 regarding public safety under the fire department. And at this time, we'll invite up someone to present the resolution regarding the bid award for the purchase of annual physical exams for firefighters. So I'm looking to Deputy County Manager Johnson to begin that presentation. You're muted, sir. We can't hear you.
Still learning, Chair, still learning.
I know, we're getting through it.
We're trying to limit some of the contacts. We're limiting the, the ones that are actually presenting this morning. So you guys are stuck with me on this part. But on the public safety, for the resolution awarding the bids to SiteMed for our yearly physicals for the fire service, this is part of the NFPA 1500 and NFPA 1583 requirement for physicals for firefighters' safety and health and wellness. This has been ongoing for many years now, which the company comes in and, and, and does the assessment, the physical assessment. The includes hearing, cardiac, a physical assessment, testing for cardiac-related issues. This was sent out through Seal Bid 20-33, had three responsive vendors, and the SiteMed, very loyalist vendor that submitted a bid for this. There's some questions too about, you know, why outsource this when we have a clinic to run 350 personnel through a testing process that requires specific NFPA-style testing guidelines and equipment. There, there's not a large number of vendors who have all that, because it's just unless you do it full-time, which the company see bid on it, they actually do this as their only business that can, that bring the mobile laboratories and everything out. So that's why the three bids came in, and we can't facilitate this in our, in our local clinic that is just staffed, you know, with a PA.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation overview. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Okay, seeing now, the now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I saw a motion, I heard a motion from Commissioner Wilson, then I heard indefinitely Commissioner Thomas. Any further comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Okay, it looks unanimous. Thank you. County clerk, will you confirm that motion?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Wilson, motion seconded by Commissioner Thomas, unanimous, 600. Motion to approve, Commissioner Wilson, motion seconded by Commissioner Thomas, unanimous, six oh oh.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we're moving to the next item, which is also a public safety item, um, regarding an ordinance to amend to Chapter three, four, public safeties. And it's regarding the subchapter two, fire prevention and protection. So I'll guess I'll look to the Deputy County Manager again for that item. And I don't see him on, so I'm not sure if he's been. Okay, there we go. Oh, we got, um, a deputy here. So thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chief.
And fellow commissioners, I'm, again, I'm Chief Black Fire Marshal, Henry County Fire Department. Um, today, what we're doing is we're bringing back Exhibit ten B on the agenda, which was originally presented back in March third meeting. It is the ordinance amendment to Chapter three, four, for public safety, fire prevention, and protection. Um, what you should have before you is a final copy, uh, ready for approval and publication. Um, the original document you received a month ago had the old versus the new recommendation changes in it. And this, what you see in front of you now is the complete document. Um, we are revisiting this because there were, there were three questions, um, presented by Commissioner Clemmons. Um, um, basically, the proposed amendment serves dual purpose. It provides for the removal of abstract language that was vague and open for interpretation, as well as the addition of a fire alarm and fire protection sprinklers ordinance. Um, to begin with, we'll address the three comments from Commissioner Clemmons from the last meeting. Um, the first comment, uh, there were concerns, the, as far as, um, she said the fire alarm section applies to all new business and new construction. Uh, we needed to make sure language was clear, and we would like to see that put in place, exactly what we're talking about. Uh, her concerns were in old buildings. Um, whether if old buildings were closed, or if a new owner takes place, or even if there's not construction or a new business, there still should come up the current code. So what we did was we went back in and added the section, um, ordinance provision, which is actually on page twenty-five of the document, uh, sprinkle requirements for existing buildings and structures. Um, the purpose of this section is encourage the continued use or reuse of legally existing buildings and structures. Uh, the intent is permit repairs, renovations, modifications, reconstructions, additions, and the change or use of occupants in existing buildings. And of course, any requirements for the safety of building occupants that are not specific to provide for the code uh, shall be determined by the local authority having jurisdiction. Um, basically, what it does is it outlines conditions for, uh, existing buildings that do not apply to current code. At any time, there is a change in occupancy or use or required to meet current code, or, or, which includes an introduction of any hazards. Um, and any renovation, uh, modification, reconstruction, which exceeds fifty percent of work areas. Now, this is reflected directly in the building codes. So what we did was we took it out and we placed it into our ordinances so that it's prevalent. Hopefully, that, um, puts that language, clear language, from the first meeting. So that now we can address, uh, code violations or code compliance with existing buildings. The second comment that was made, uh, was concerning personal care homes. Um, she asked that language should be defined the numbers of persons allowed, as well as language to define the requirements for licensed residential personal care homes. So again, we went back into the ordinance. You'll notice on page twenty-two and twenty-three of the ordinances, we expanded on the definitions to clarify exactly what we were talking about. From a fire prevented perspective, fire and life safety, what we are talking about is residential group R three occupancies, which is different from ULDC occupancy groups. Um, and according to the International Building Code, care facilities for a person receiving care that are within a single dwelling unit are permitted to comply with the International Residential Code provided on a max sprinkler system installed. That section was in the code section already. What we did was we expanded the definition. Um, personal care homes and adult job childcare facilities shall provide an approved state license prior to the issuance of a county business license, which is also reflected in our ULDC. All home occupations obtain a business license from Henry County. Uh, per the ULDC, home occupation person care homes shall be limited to the provision of care in two persons and not more than three persons, or as otherwise provided for according to the ULDC. Now, there are exceptions in there where conditional use permit will be, can be issued if you're, uh, if you're seeking providing care for more than three individuals. And the final comment, um, that was made in the last meeting was in reference to sprinkle requirements for townhomes. Um, some conversation took place concerning some brownstone type townhomes coming to Henry County. Um, single versus multifamily, we're looking for, she was looking for additional language, I believe. So again, what we've done to reply to that directly, um, a standalone townhome or condo um, is built like any traditional home. It's a single dwelling. Okay? So the differences from the normal build, um, that has shared walls and shared wall developments, what we're talking about. Uh, in some instances, properties are set up as standalone because it allows the developer to put more homes on a smaller acreage. But, um, page twenty-three, the ordinance revision, it, it states, um, in addition to codes, we are, we are only focusing on those occupancies containing more than two dwelling units. Again, shared walls, our concern is for the adjoining neighbors, also the larger structures and the safety of our firefighter personnel. So, uh, to clarify that, we're not talking about single standalone condos or townhomes. Um, and really, that's, I guess, that's determined by how the deed or the agreements are written. But what we're looking at specifically is the shared walled units. Um, and hopefully that addresses the the three comments from the last meeting. Um, that pretty much concludes our presentation. If anybody has any questions, try to answer them, boy. Oh, am I on mute?
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I think I saw Commissioner Thomas's hand, um, uh, up on the, did you have questions, Commissioner Thomas?
I was only asking him to repeat the part about the shared walls. She said, you know, this was shared walls, I believe, um, well, being held it a little bit different, and I apologize. But I'm having to hear through a cell phone. I can't hear the meeting directly. Just about the shared walls. What did he say?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, um, if you could picture, uh, for lack of better terms, row housing, okay? When you talk about, there's different style townhomes that can be built, whether there's, what we're specifically concerned about is two or more than two dwelling units side by side. So basically, you have three or apartment units side by side. They all have one common wall in between. So basically, if the unit on the left uh, has a fire or incident, that fire would spread to the other two units. Right? So what we're asking for, we wrote in our sprinkler ordinance is that when you have a, a townhome or a condo, it's specific to this town or condos, that when you're talking about two or more dwelling units, that we're asking for fire alarm sprinklers to be installed, uh, in those units. Um, for the protection, uh, basically because of the close proximity to the neighbors.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Thomas?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from other commissioners regarding this matter? Okay, um, seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Wilson and a second from Commissioner Clemmons by hand. Um, any further discussions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, um, Commissioner Holmes, I can't see your vote. Okay. Okay, oh, okay. It looks like that was a unanimous vote. Okay, um, county clerk, will you confirm the motion and vote, please?
Commissioner Wilson made a motion to approve. Commissioner Clemmons seconded, unanimous, six oh oh.
Thank you. And commissioners, we do ask that if you don't mind, please mute in your phones. There was a little background noise that was going on, and we'll again, kind of pause it if you need to unmute when you want to speak, please. So again, if you could mute your phones to minimize the background noise. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're now moving to our next, um, Henry County Fire Department resolution, which is to approve the purchase of six new ambulances, um, in the, in the amount of one thousand, oh, one million five hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. So, um, again, um, I guess our deputy county manager is making that presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm back, uh, for this one. The, uh, these, uh, this is a kind of unique situation. Uh, we had proposed to bring our, our capital, um, finance department back today to the board. However, with the, with the changes in the market and us working with the financial planning team, uh, there's been some recommendations not to do that for at least four more weeks because of the, the instability of the market. Uh, this is one of the capital projects that's, that's indicated in our approved list that you guys did. Uh, a couple are back beginning of March, end of February, uh, on the capital list. These ambulances are our typical ambulances we buy for our replacement plan. However, it takes about twelve to thirteen months to build these, these trucks, and there's not a, not a funding commitment or, or basically just pay on delivery. That we order the ambulances, the ambulances are built, when they're delivered, then they're paid for, and by then it will be, uh, definitely capital funding and I'll be in place. Um, so we're asking today to go ahead and get permission to go ahead and place the order for these six ambulances. We're behind on our, uh, our replacement plan. Um, it's been two years since we've ordered trucks. Uh, so we're asking today to go with the, uh, the purchase of Bron ambulances, six of them, uh, for the amount of one point, um, one million five hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars.
So we've heard the presentation now. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have one.
Okay, I see Commissioner Clemmons, and then we'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
Brad, I know we've been talking about leasing, um, things for the county instead of purchasing, um, just because of the miles and the wear and tear and being able to have that to turn over. Um, is that an option for ambulance?
There's, it's not, ambulances are not on the preferred lease process because they go through so much wear and tear every day. It's like a police car that we can do a lease purchase, you know, but the lease turn in. Now, for example, the ladder trucks, when, um, when Chief Phillips and his team brought the ladder trucks, the lease payment for ladder truck, we were saving, we were making that much, that much on a, a maintenance cost every year. So then lease turn in, they will bring them in seven years, replace them, and take the old ones with them, or makes sense because they're not running like a, like an ambulance or a police car. So at this time, the buying of these trucks are the best option. Let me tell you the, the step two. The ambulances we're buying is swapping out the Bron model. Um, and these ambulances here, next year, you'll see the ones we bought four years ago. Instead of spending the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per unit, you, you've actually spent about a hundred and twenty-five. You take the unit back, they take the box off, the new chassis, refurb it, and send it back for half the cost. Our goal is to get into a replacement plan for all our vehicles, but our ambulances will be a replacement remount plan. So you actually remount the box and save money in the long run.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an option for us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and, okay, all right, thank you. Um, Commissioner Thomas.
My question is in reference to the fact you said this is a project that would be funded from the capital improvement project list. And, um, so we are still waiting for the consultants to come back to us, basically, to tell us what amount of money they would be bringing for us to use with the capital improvement project, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. And the reason this is coming forward today is because it was actually planned to come forward, but it takes so long to build these trucks. So every minute we're waiting, it, it takes that much longer for us to, to go ahead and get the order in, so we can get put on the list to, uh, to get these, these, these units built.
So if indeed, and I'm assuming we will get money back for capital improvement, but based upon the price of seven year now, and that money does not come from us, where would this be paid from?
This will have to come out of our rainy day fund. It's going to come out of our emergency fund that, um, that we have. You know, we have our, our mandate of twenty-five percent. We have five percent we had for our, our, our triple rating, triple bond rating. Also, we have, you know, it's a contingency planning fund for rainy day, uh, that, that you guys approved last year in, in our pockets. And, uh, so I think that's the, uh, the goal is, we feel very confident that the, uh, our, our capital processing, talking to our, our, our bond council and our consultants, that will definitely move forward, um, with a little delay because of the market. Um, however, we feel confident that will happen. If not, it will have to come back to our rainy day fund and then allocate this money through our public safety allocation.
So you're using the term rainy day or rainy day fund?
Yeah. The fund balance.
Okay, so that's what I was about to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Fund balance, which we're talking about, and because we are face to collide, we want to make sure that the people that are watching understand what we're talking about, and that we don't have a third or fourth fund to pull money from, which you're talking about. If indeed, things in our system is planned for our capital improvement, uh, consultants to bring money back, then this would have to be paid for out of fund balance, correct?
You are correct.
Uh, and the next thing is, this, since this is one of the projects on the capital improvement project list, uh, just for clarification for those that are listening, every project that's on the list has to come back individually to the board for approval before being funded from any capital improvement dollars or from the general fund balance, correct?
Yes, ma'am. What, what happens, once you come, we will come back, the financial advisors, bond council will come back, and they're out now getting the best avenue to, to fund all the projects you guys voted on two months ago. Now, once that's done, the, the major project list can be funded, but coming back to the board for the, for the anything over fifty thousand dollars has to come to the board, uh, for direct approval. So yes, ma'am, it will come back to the board for, for that approval, secondary approval.
Okay. Well, thank you. I wanted to make it very clear because I have received emails from individuals stating, please don't spend money unnecessarily in these uncertain times, and I can understand that. And please be sure to ask questions about how the funding will be moved around during this time period, and what are we doing to protect ourselves in case there's another collapse in the economy. Uh, so we need to, should we put out there, if indeed, um, the capital improvement dollars do not come back as projected, that this money has to come out of our general fund balance, and we have to fund it from there. Um, in addition to that, this is a project, and each and every project that's on that list over fifty thousand dollars must come back to the county commissioners for final approval before they can be approved, um, to begin. So thank you. That was my question and information I was going to share.
Yes, ma'am. And one, one thing to add to it, on the direction of the county manager, we've already froze all unnecessary, non-essential employees for the rest of this fiscal year. We've already limited spending for all departments, except for essential expenditures for this, this COVID-19 period. Because we want to see what the market's going to do. What is our budget? We know that our, our lost income is going to go down. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing for the, for the taxpayer moving forward, and, and, and I think we're, we're moving in a good direction.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you say that, so that the public can hear you say that we have put those measures in place. Uh, they are not aware of it. So every time we share information of that nature, that lets them know that the commissioners in the county is thinking forward and is protecting our assets as we go forth in this challenging time. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wilson, um, had a, had a, had a question, and please unmute your phone, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, I'm good. I, a question on the cap replacement, uh, Brad, is are we looking at replacing ambulances and fire trucks? Or fire trucks in the future? I know we've got ambulances today. Do we have fire trucks on the list?
Fire trucks comes, it's not, it is, we have replaced some fire trucks in the last two years. The fire trucks are not as urgent as the ambulances. We've had some ambulances that's been involved in accidents, has been taken out of service. So the, the lengthy time it takes to rebuild these units is, is a concern to make sure that we don't have a downturn or a couple more accidents that, that take some trucks out of service, and to make sure we have the right equipment out on the road. So I think the fire trucks are part of the capital plan. I, I know it is, but it's also timed out. It's not the time for them to come into rotation. That makes sense.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
A move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Okay, I saw Commissioner Barham hand goes up, second from Commissioner Barham. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, please. Okay, that looks to be unanimous. County clerk, will you please confirm the motion and vote?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Wilson, second. Commissioner Barham, vote unanimous, six oh oh.
Thank you. And thank you, Deputy County Manager. Appreciate that update as well on the budget management as well. So we're now moving to item eleven for regarding SPOSS, and this is a resolution to approve a budget amendment to reallocate District Four SPOSS Three funds from various completed projects to District Four Mosley Park. And so we invite up our county staff, Mr. Rocky, Ron Burkhalter, I'm sorry, to actually make that presentation. So good morning, Mr. Burkhalter. Please proceed.
Chair Commissioners, good morning. I'm filling in for Rocky today. Mosley Park is an approved SPOSS Three project. A budget amendment's needed to reallocate funds from various completed District Four projects to the District Four Mosley Park project account. The three projects that have been completed and have remaining funds in it is the East Lake Road Phase Two, Rock Quarry Road Widening, and Kellytown Park for a total of seventeen thousand, ninety-three dollars. Staff is recommending a budget amendment to reallocate the funds from those projects into the Mosley Park account. If you have any questions.
Okay, I have one, but are there any questions from the board? Could you elaborate on, I guess, the Rock Quarry widening and how we're able to reallocate that, Mr. Burkhalter?
Yes, ma'am. On the Rock Quarry widening, there's different phases in it, and this was a SPOSS Three project, so you can only take SPOSS Three money from SPOSS Three to SPOSS Three. Okay, so it's not like we can take the SPOSS Three money and move it to SPOSS Four.
All right. Well, thank you for that clarification for all. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? So at this time, the floor is now open for a motion, and I can't see District Two. Okay, so, okay, so we see a motion from District, Commissioner Thomas. Is there a second? Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Barham hand go up first. So a second from Commissioner Barham, or any further discussions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand by signify, or raising your hand, please. So I actually see five. Oh, and a thumbs up for Commissioner District Two, so that is a unanimous vote. So County Clerk, will you please confirm the motion and vote?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Barham, unanimous, six oh oh.
All right, thank you. We're now moving to our, our DLT items, and the first one is a resolution to approve a budget amendment and award a contract to extend existing methane venting trench at the Wendy, Henry County Wendy Hill Road landfill. So we'll ask Mr. Burkhalter if he will make that presentation, our Public Works Director. So thank you again, Mr. Burkhalter.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chair. Wendy Hill Road landfill is a closed municipal solid waste landfill facility here in county. A methane venting trench is necessary to keep us in compliance with the EPD. Purchased Department solicited proposals to extend the existing methane venting trench at the Henry County landfill. Three proposals were received. They were reviewed and scored by an evaluation committee. Carlson, Carlson, excuse me, Environmental Consultants of Monroe, North Carolina, received the highest evaluation. The evaluation committee recommends awarding the contract to extend the existing trench at the landfill to Carlson Environmental in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And for information, the scope of work that's entailed in the methane trench is, there's existing methane trenches out on the site within the landfill. What this does is, this extends the existing trench four hundred and fifty feet by up to twenty feet deep and three feet wide. If anyone has any questions, I'll certainly entertain, give you the answers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burkhalter. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, I saw Commissioner Wilson's mouth move, but he was muted. Is that true, Commissioner? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wilson, and a second I see by the raising of District Two Commissioner Clemmons as a second. Is there any other further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I can't see Commissioner Holmes. Okay, so, okay, that was unanimous. Okay, so any opposed, just to clarify. Okay. So that looks to be a unanimous decision. County Clerk, will you please confirm the motion and vote?
Commissioner Wilson, motion to approve. Commissioner Clemmons, second. Unanimous, six oh oh.
Thank you. We'll now continue with Mr. Ron Burkhalter, who's our Director of Public Works, to speak about the resolution to approve a lighting service agreement with Georgia Power for non-revenue street lighting on Jonesboro Road from I-75 to the Clayton County line.
Thank you, Chair. Henry County DOT has reached out to Georgia Power as requested by District Two Commissioner Clemmons for non-revenue streetlights on Jonesboro Road, starting at I-75 to the Clayton County line. Based on the preliminary design, George Power projected the cost of approximately eight thousand dollars per month for approximately one hundred and forty area lights, and there's no upfront cost that's required. Costs will be paid monthly out of the DOT budget and in the line item for non-revenue streetlights. If anyone has any questions?
Okay, thank you for that presentation and update. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is that you, Commissioner Wilson? Okay, if you will unmute your phone, please, and make your statement.
So I've got a couple of questions. Number one, this is for one particular road in the county, but we have several roads throughout the county. It probably needs some type of evaluation for lighting. I would like for the county manager's staff to, to evaluate countywide and bring back a recommendation for putting some type of lighting throughout the county instead of just on one road. And, and actually through this time, we are going through our budgeting process. I'm not sure this is the time to be spending that type of money on lighting.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Commissioner Wilson.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Commissioner Wilson, this really wasn't about the lighting as much. It was about the public safety. I think you remember that, I don't know if you were at the meeting where the DOT guy mentioned about the highest roads for accidents and impact in the county. And the only county road that was on the list was Jonesboro Road. So if you guys, if someone from the county could speak a little bit about the accidents and the high accident area was Jonesboro Road. And we also said, I knew that this would be an issue with you, Commissioner Wilson. You may not want to support this, but it's not really about the lights. It's not about a particular area. It's not about a particular district. It's about public safety. So I just want to mention that.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? I have a comment as well. Okay, I saw Commissioner Bar. Commissioner Bar, if you'll unmute your phone. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at this, this would cost us about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And I agree with Commissioner Wilson. I mean, we probably need to look at some safety issues and maybe focus more on intersections in the county. And I don't know if this would be an option. I, I got this question for Ron. I know how we do streetlights in a subdivision. Could this be done the same way on a major road as in a subdivision where the homeowners or the owners of the property could sign up and agree to pay for these lights and possibly go that route? But we've got a lot of areas. I know the city of McDonough provides streetlight, and everybody in the whole city pays a separate tax for that, and that helps fund that. But we have roads like the new Cap Ground Road extension. The list just goes on and on and on. And I just think we need to have a little more information before we can move forward with this. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission before I speak as well? My thoughts are, I agree that we need to look at the safety of Jonesboro Road for lighting. We've heard that, and I'll also agree that we've heard other comments of other parts of the county that need to be evaluated. I, I'm asking that at this time that we consider tabling this, at least for the next couple of weeks, as we do have to determine what is very urgent at this time with our unknown circumstances due to COVID-nineteen. So those are my questions and comments at this time. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Holmes, and then I see Commissioner Barham. Commissioner Holmes, I think you are muted.
I actually agree with Commissioner Clemmons here.
I'm sorry, it's getting a little static.
If the economy starts to go into a tailspin. Yeah, the economy goes into a, a tailspin, we could see an uptick in crime. So I think, you know, from.
Commissioner Holmes, you're so static right now.
Safety perspective.
Uh-oh, and I think we dropped him, actually. Commissioner Holmes?
Will probably be very beneficial in area because that area has the highest concentration of.
Commissioner Holmes, we did not hear all of what you stated. Can you hear me?
Nothing, heard nothing.
Commissioner Holmes? Okay, I think what I did. And I think we've lost him. Okay, I'm gonna ask our, our, those that on staff or county clerk and county attorney to see if I heard parts of this and if you heard anything differently. But I think I heard Commissioner Holmes say that he agreed with Commissioner Clemmons, that there were some major issues of safety along Jonesboro Road. And I think I heard partly if he said that, you know, if the economy changes or ticks up, but that's when I really lost him. So is there any other things for record that we can note from Commissioner Holmes as we have this discussion? Oh, I think I see him coming back. Hopefully. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, can you do another test, please, to test, because we lost you?
Yes, that's your first voice working here.
Wait, okay, Commissioner Holmes, can you hear me? Commissioner Holmes? Can you do a test, Commissioner Holmes, to? Commissioner, can you do? Always, no, yeah. We can't, we can't hear you. Okay, we've lost it. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, I cannot hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, all right, just for record, I've made an attempt to kind of recap what I thought I heard. Can we hear from the county clerk or county attorney of what you also heard, so that it can be considered for record? In this, and Commissioner Holmes, if you can hear us, if you can give us a thumbs up if you think that this is accurate or accurate recall of what you stated. So our county attorney, can you actually kind of help restate what you thought you heard, and then maybe Commissioner Holmes can give us a thumbs up, a thumbs down if we're, if it's off?
What I was able to hear led me to believe that Commissioner Holmes supported the proposed resolution. He was concerned about safety on the roads and concerned about a potential uptick in crime in the event the economy should slow down and the streetlights would aid in law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Is that correct, Commissioner Holmes, if you can hear us, as a summary? Okay, I'm not sure if he hears us as well now. Okay, well, thank you for that. So I think, okay, thumbs up. Okay, he agreed that that was a good summary by the county attorney for record. The next person I saw was Commissioner Barham. You had your hands up after Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I want to go back to my original question for Mr. Burkhalter. Is, is this an area that we could do the same kind of streetlight ordinance thing that we do in subdivisions?
Commissioner, I don't know, the ordinance that we have for subdivisions right now, is the property owners in the subdivision are assessed for the, the streetlights that are in the subdivision. On a thoroughfare like Jonesboro Road, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how we would go about assessing the property owners, because there's property owners on Jonesboro Road, but there's also property owners adjacent to or off of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I see Commissioner Clemmons.
And I would like for Brad to talk a little bit about that, because this is not a new project that we've been working on. This project has probably been going on for about two years, and Ron, you know this as well. We've been looking at this. So Brad, I would definitely like you to have a conversation about, could the homeowners on Jonesboro Road participate in this? Because that was my first concern. How could we get this done through the homeowners on Jonesboro Road? But the thing is, is that when you look at the highest accident areas in Henry County, a DOT person came, and he gave us five less than, I guess, a month ago. And out of those fives, we only had one that was actually in the state and not on the interstate, which was Jonesboro Road. Chair Wood, I understand you wanting to table this, and because I guess you guys are not ready or wanting to support it, and that's fine, because I think that we really need to hear from the public about this issue. It's not something that we just came up with. But Brad, we need to hear from our police department about the accidents, and I want you to talk a little bit about the possibility of the residents on Jonesboro Road participating, because I know we looked at that first before this came to DOT and Georgia Power.
Yes, ma'am. This has been going on for, for quite some time. And I think it actually started with some accidents out there on the Babs Mill area of the county line. It was pretty, pretty significant accidents that caused some significant injuries. Since then, them lights have been installed at that intersection. However, we did look at it, and I might have to defer to Patrick, because it's been a little while, but it was my understanding we could not use the citizens that, that on that highway to, to use it like a subdivision. So for them to get fifty-one percent of the landowners on Jonesboro Road was not the intent of the streetlight corridor area to be utilized on, on somewhere like Jonesboro Road that that's significant. So it took a while to get the process done. At the time, it was a state identified roadway, so it took time for the engineers to go through and, and get everything done through the state DOT process. So that's where we are, and I will defer to Patrick to make sure I'm correct, but I think last time, it's been months, we talked about it, actually, over six months, so it's a long process, that it was not intended for the streetlight corridor or ordinance for the subdivisions to be applicable to the county roads like that.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none here, none. The floor is now open for a motion.
I will go ahead and make the motion to table it, because I really want citizens' input in this, and I think that that will be helpful. I want you guys, commissioners, to take a look at it, do your homework on public safety, and find out about the accidents, the injuries, and the deaths that have happened on that road. And I know that you guys all heard the report from our DOT person, but it may have slipped your mind since then. But I would encourage you and urge you to go back and look at this high-impact area, the accidents that are happening on this area, and see why this is a public safety issue and a necessity that we move to put lights on Jonesboro Road.
Okay, we've had a motion. Is there a second? Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Holmes' hand go up first, so we got a second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I would like during this time to have whoever can. I would like during this time to have whoever can send some type of report to me about what this is, I don't really know, branch that has been going on for a while. I don't know what that means, that one year, two years or three years. But can we get some type of report to look at? What was the accident? What has happened? I feel like I'm in the dark, but I do want to support public safety. And we've heard the commission say this is a public safety issue. But can we please get reports sent to us to know what it is, especially me? So I know exactly what it is he's referring to when he starts saying things are high. We've had accident scenario, okay, how many? This is going on for a while, okay, how long? This cost has been based upon what? And how long are we, what options do we have to pay for this? Because as the other commissioners have stated, I'm trying to get lights on campus now. And if we're paying $100,000 a year for how long, I mean, for how, how much of a road? That one mile, two mile, three mile. But please send us some information so we can make a decision based upon, as stated, public safety.
Okay, and anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you.
Okay, and my comment again is that Jonesboro Road, along with some other roads throughout the county, are very significant regarding some emergency lighting and do look forward to the summary of what those roads are, along with priorterizations. And I know Jonesboro Road is definitely high in the priorterization. So again, with the unknowns of COVID-19, I again, I'm glad that we're going to table this. We'll bring it back soon as we've gotten some guidance, really, on when we can definitely move past our emergency needs at this time. So at this time, we've had a motion and a second and comments. Are there any further comments? All in favor, please raise your hand by. Okay, I see. Okay, I think that was a unanimous decision. All right, thank you. So county clerk, will you please confirm the motion and vote?
Commissioner Clemens made a motion to table Commissioner Holmes seconded. It was unanimous, 600.
Thank you. Okay, well, now move into the Board of Commissioners items. And so the first one is a resolution requesting Henry County's local legislative delegation to introduce a local act authorizing Henry County to create tax allocation districts within Henry County. And I understand the presenter would be our county attorney, Mr. Patrick Jockstetter.
Good morning again. So the resolution before you would authorize or would make, would be a formal request from the Board of Commissioners to the local legislative delegation, asking that they present for consideration by the General Assembly a local act that would authorize you to create tax allocation districts. This would be done under Georgia's Redevelopment Powers Law. In order to have the authority to create tax allocation districts, you must be authorized first by the General Assembly to conduct a referendum. There would then be a referendum where the voters would decide whether or not to grant the county that power. If that referendum should pass, then the county could move forward with creating tax allocation districts. We've discussed these before in the past. They are economic development tools that allow you to identify an area primarily of tax allocation district. And as values within that district increase, you can utilize that the tax revenue generated by those increased values to support infrastructure within that area. You can also use them to support financing, which is called tax incremental financing. And that allows you to build the necessary infrastructure to develop otherwise undeveloped or underdeveloped areas within the county.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. So at this time, are there any questions? And I may have one just for a point of clarification. Any questions? Okay, the only question I have is, is it possible, even with all that we're experiencing right now, to potentially get this on the ballot in November of this year?
I don't know. You know, the General Assembly is suspended indefinitely. So they would have to reconvene, they would have to, it'll be up to them. It'll be up to the General Assembly to decide timing. I would not be terribly optimistic about November of this year, but I suppose it's possible.
And I understood. All right, thank you. Just wanted for point of reference on the record. So thank you much. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor? Oh, the floor is now open for a motion, I'm sorry.
To approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Clemens. Looking for, I see a second from Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I see everyone. I don't see Commissioner Holmes at this point. So, so county clerk, will you confirm the motion and vote, please?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Clemens, second by Commissioner Thomas. Vote 501 with Commissioner Holmes not being present.
All right, thank you. We're now moving to the next item and this is a discussion item only. And I understand we'll have staff to make the presentation regarding an ordinance amendment to establish a distance requirement between small box discount retailers. So we've got on. Stacy Jordan Rudisal. Hello, Mr. Rudisal, and welcome to the Zoom call meeting.
Thank you very much. This item before you is, we had.
We're having problems. We can't hear you clearly. Can you try to start again, please?
Yes, yes, this item came before you back in February. And so the item was something that the board wished for staff to put together. So this item before you is staff's draft of an ordinance that we wish to bring back in, before you in May. So what we would like is for you to give us feedback as far as whether this is something that you think that we're on the right track of or if there's something that we should change or if there's something that you wish for us to add. So this, this item is for you to give us feedback so that we can bring this back before you in May for an adoption.
Okay, Mr. Rudisal, if you don't mind for record, just to kind of review, well, to review any highlights that need to be noted in this resolution so that, again, it is stated for the record for those that are listening in.
Yes, so this resolution that's before you, this ordinance amendment, which we would wish to bring back before you in May for an adoption. It does a number of things. It defines small box discount stores. And then once that definition is set, we regulate it by establishing a distance requirement between small box discount stores of approximately one mile. And then we also move forward and we further regulate distance requirements between vape shops, beauty supply stores, which includes hair salons and nail salons, and also tattoo shops and body piercing. And we're proposing a distance requirement between these types of establishments of 1,000 feet. And this 1,000 feet is something that is similar to our pawn shop ordinance, which we had heard from the board about back in February. And I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Thank you much for that overview. And I saw county attorneys attempt to put it up on the screen. I didn't get a chance to see it, but we do have copies in front of us. So I see that Commissioner Thomas has a question. So Commissioner Thomas? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, we cannot hear you at all. So I'm not sure who's got Commissioner Thomas on speakerphone, if you can unmute her so that we can hear her question.
She's ready, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, thank you again for any questions or comments.
My question is, did he state that the distance between the small box retailers would be one mile? And then 1,000 feet between the other specialty stores?
Yes, Commissioner.
Enough space when you start thinking about small retail stores in Henry County. We're already inundated by them. And I would like to see that mileage increase, at least between seven miles. When you think between seven to 10 miles, you're talking about five to six minutes to get there. There's not a string of ways to get between them. But when we do one mile apart, that's where they are now. Every mile you have them, every mile they're big. So I definitely want to see that increase between seven to 10 miles. I prefer 10 miles apart. When it comes down to the, to the small retailers, I would love to see them at one mile. And not 1,000 feet. But that's my thought on this because it's too many as it is. And we need to find a way to stop them from being, to encourage them here, but stop them from being so close together.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll note that down and we'll make that part of our research.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Jockstad? If you will remove the item, then, okay, very good. Thank you. It's a better viewing. Any other questions or comments from any commissioners? Okay, I still do not see Commissioner Holmes on. So at this time, I don't, this again was discussion only. If anyone does have any further thoughts or questions or suggestions, if we'll definitely submit those to Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudisal. And we'll look forward to this coming back to the board for a discussion and vote. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the next item, which I understand is not necessarily Board of Commissioners' item, but it may have been misplaced. But the next item is a resolution authorizing the installation of a morgue cooler in the amount of $14,500. And I'm not sure who from the staff is going to be presenting that resolution. Looks like Deputy County Manager Brett Johnson. So you may proceed, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, you're exactly correct. This is a emergency purchase we had to do. It just basically transferred some money over out of Hutch's, our facility, making the director's budget into the county coroner's budget so we could actually put a temporarily morgue, the cooler part of it. Just want to make the board aware, it has been brought as part of the capital immediate need plan that we discussed. We have been out for bids and moving forward, it will bring back to the board the original morgue facility. With everything going on right now, and we had issues that we typically rent space for more capacity, but that space is no longer available, which made this an emergency purchase. Just want to make the board aware and we'll be bringing back in the near future the morgue facility for the coroner. That's what we needed in Henry County. But no actions needed, Chair. Just want to make you aware.
Okay, so let me just clarify for the record. This was a discussion-only item. And just FYI to the Board of Commissioners, and you will bring us back a plan regarding the morgue.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Chair, there is a resolution attached.
Yes.
On the agenda. I don't know if it's necessary now or if y'all want to table it and bring it up later.
This was, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, the one over here now is under the threshold. The intent, the resolution on here, make sure that we have the right documentation. The 14, 14,500 out of facilities, it was later determined we did not have to have a board action there. But the board would like to go ahead, Madam Chair, and approve that. We can do it for, just for technicality.
Well, just need some clarity from the staff regarding this. So are you recommending the resolution or discussion only? So please clarify. Mr. Johnson?
I just want, I'll go ask the county attorney for legal advice on that, Madam Chair. I'm good either way.
Well, it's up to the board, which if you want to vote to approve it, that's fine. If y'all want to wait and approve the larger project when it comes back, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, I saw Commissioner Clemens' hand go up. Commissioner Clemens?
Brad, this is an emergency as well because as we get more patients or more constituents that are dying, we don't have a morgue to put them in. That's one of the things that's been a concern as well for me is that when people die in Henry County, we have to borrow space to lay their bodies. And as much as we respect them living, we need to also respect the dead. And I think that as a county our size, it's time for us to invest in a morgue and a place where we can lay our loved ones, you know, once they're demise. So I don't think we need to be waiting on building this morgue. I think it's urgent that we look at this as well.
It's ready. It'll be at the next board meeting, commissioners. When it was presented on here, the intent was to have the original, the one that's already been bid out, the facility. And it's got crossed up, the crosswires in this digital age got crossed up on communications. And, but it will be back the next commission meeting, the same thing as the other capital for the Amos.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Thomas and then I'll come to Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I think Commissioner Clemens really expressed my concerns that we are in a position that we don't have a place to use in the county. And I do support the fact that we must have a place in the county to support our loved ones in case of a death and not have to constantly scramble to determine where to house them in that kind of period. So she really echoed that. I can support that statement now.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you may unmute your phone. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So the 14,5, Brad, is for the cooler, it's going to be placed in a temporary building. But we're going to come back for the permanent morgue. So this right here, the cooler will be actually moved from the temporary building once you get the, the permanent morgue done. We're just going to shift the cooler from the temporary to the permanent. Is that correct?
That is the plan. The one we have, and Commissioner, we've already purchased cool. We have a morgue up and running today because they come that urgent for temporary location in Henry County because of the COVID-19 threat. And we got the only one that was available in the Southeast United States for delivery. But where our intention is to move that one commissioner to the, to the facility that's already been bid out through our bid process back in February. Yes, short answer, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other? I see Commissioner Barham. You may unmute your phone, Commissioner Barham.
Now, y'all do that. But Brad, I was just curious, how many bodies can we store in this lock or freezer thing?
Our, the cooler, Commissioner, at this time, we could store probably six to eight bodies in this cooler.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, here and now, I'm seeing now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we need, we need to make a motion for this one? Are we?
Yeah, we're going to make a motion to either support it or table it or whatever, so.
Second.
Okay, so we had Commissioner Wilson. Can you clarify your motion, Commissioner Wilson?
To approve.
Okay, to approve the resolution as stated, okay? And Commissioner Clemens, I think you said second, is that true? Thank you. So we had a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please, or raise your hand to signify approval. Okay, that looks unanimous. County clerk, will you confirm that motion and vote?
Wilson made a motion to approve. Commissioner Clemens seconded. It was unanimous, 600.
Thank you. Okay, well, now move into the final item, which is a resolution to authorize a use of fund balance for District 5 sidewalks. And I understand that Mr. David Smith is the presenter. So hello and welcome, Mr. Smith.
Morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Henry County community. What you have before you is a resolution to assign $2 million of unassigned fund balance currently for sidewalks in Multi-Use Pass in District 5. Typically, we like to restrict the use of fund balance, unassigned fund balance, to one-time items and emergencies. But in prior discussions and in prior meetings, the commission did indicate some intent for allocation of certain items for capital projects and deferred maintenance for unassigned fund balance. And so this resolution coming before you is to assign $2 million of that unassigned fund balance for the purposes of sidewalks in Multi-Use Pass in District 5. Staff recommends approval of this resolution. What questions do you have?
Okay, we've heard, had the press. Okay, we've heard, had the presentation, see Commissioner Holmes, um, would now like to make a statement, Commissioner Holmes.
Hey, Madam Chair, um, as everybody know.
Commissioner Holmes, we are having the same problem again.
Oh, the, uh, the citizens in, uh, North Henry County in this particular, okay, sidewalks for. You guys, hello?
Yes, we can barely hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
No, bits and pieces.
Okay, I don't know what the point is. Okay, um, well, the citizens in North Henry County have been advocating for these sidewalks for a number of years, and I just, um, I just hope that we can finally get this, um, done for them.
Okay, I think that part came very clear, so thank you. Are there any questions or other comments from other Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Wilson, and then the Commissioner Thomas.
So we go back to sidewalks, I think the, uh, the whole county has sidewalk needs. I have several elementary schools that, that need to be connected from, um, to communities with sidewalks. I have, uh, these parents, these kids walking on the right of way to school. So I think we need to look at our, uh, our immediate needs for sidewalks. Under these, under these circumstances, we, we probably need to, to put this off until we can get a better handle on what spending is going to be in the near future. So, um, that's my comments.
Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas, you now have, um, the floor.
Thank you, everyone here.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my concern again is taking money out of fund balance, even though it's unassigned money, some fund balance of $2 million, when we are in a predicament, we have to have our budget, we don't. Um, because of where we are in this crisis, I'm quite sure David and the administrative team and the managerial team is going to have to do some reallocation of budget to determine what can we afford to do for the balance of this year for the incoming budget. So I'm very concerned about that. And the second thing is, I do have sidewalks that are needed. And if we have $2 million of unassigned funds, I would like to see if we, if, if the financial director say we can, um, use this money, um, break it up into five districts, so everybody can determine how to maximize those dollars for sidewalks. So my first concern is where we are in this crisis, is this the time to do this? That's the first concern. Do we need to wait to determine how our budget will be adjusted based upon the crisis that we're in? And then third, if indeed we have money available, and I have said this to the director before, if there's money available for commissions to use, you don't have to know that everywhere. Tell us what's available, how it will be distributed, so we all can take advantage of that. I really do get tired of hunting for money. Um, where is money? It's like, certain people know where it is and certain people don't. I want to know where it is just like everybody else, so that I can represent the constituents in my area. If there are funds available, every month when that report is made, his financial report is made, he should be able to say, we have these dollars available to Commissioners. We can determine how to split those dollars up and how to maximize them in the county. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, I can't see Commissioner Holmes at this point, um, so at this time, the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we tabled, it's just like we did with the streetlights. We just need to wait, if we're going to wait, all of it is public safety.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion, is there a second?
Chair, I have Commissioner Holmes on the phone.
Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, uh, if, if we can, uh, if we can, um, carry the motion and then the second, and then we'll open it up for discussion for all. So we have a motion, um, from Commissioner, um, Clemens, and then, uh, is there a, is there?
What, I, I didn't hear the motion when I was, what was your motion?
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, will you restate the motion, please?
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, if you back on, you can make your motion. We didn't have a motion, so.
Yeah, you can move to approve.
Okay, so Commissioner, um, so, uh, let me clarify for record, so, um, Commissioner, um, Clemens, you were.
The motion on the table is for the.
No, 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 let me finish, please. Um, so Commissioner Clemens, um, are you now saying that you retract your, rescind your motion and allow Commissioner Holmes to, uh, proceed with the motion, correct?
Yes, he can proceed with it.
So, uh, Commissioner Holmes, um, I heard Commissioner Holmes said the motion is to move to approve, so the motion on the table is move to approve. Is there a second? Okay, um, so we heard the motion from Commissioner Holmes, is there a second? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, um, that motion does not pass. Now, the floor is now open for a motion. I cannot hear. Okay, um, I can't, uh, a county attorney, um, I think you've got Commissioner Holmes on the phone, you're muted, and we cannot hear him. So the motion, um, did not get a second.
I'm going to make a motion to table this, so that we can get everybody on the same page with this and have the citizens' input as well.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the floor to table, is there a second? So a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further, um, discussions or comments? All in favor, um, to table, please raise your hand. Okay, we see three, and I don't know where Commissioner Holmes is, so, so of those in favor to table were three of those, um, in favor to oppose. One, two. Can't hear from Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner, uh, County Attorney, will you please?
Say that again, the, the motion to table, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I opposed it.
He voted no.
Okay, so three were in favor to table, three to oppose, so that motion fails. So, um, at this time, we'll, um, move forward. Um, those motions did fail, um, with that, so we are now moving to our next, uh, agenda item. And then we're moving into our public comments, um, which is, um, again, the opportunity for citizens, um, to voice their county-related opinions. Um, and due to COVID-19 and our current shelter-in-place ordinance, public comments, um, are not available during the live video conference, um, in person. However, um, citizens had an opportunity to submit and write into the county clerk, uh, via email by Monday, April the 6th, uh, by 5 o'clock PM, any comments that they would like to make, um, during this, um, Zoom, uh, meeting conference. And so, um, again, the comments, um, would be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and the county management prior to the meeting. But I also ask that our county clerk read whatever public comments have been received, so we've got those into record to acknowledge those who submitted public comments. So I now ask the county clerk, um, Ms. Braun, to read any public comments that have been received or that were received by Monday, April 6th at 5 o'clock PM.
Um, Chair Wood, we received one public comment from Carolyn Ingram. She's from Locust Grove, Georgia, District One. "I have watched all of the video conference meetings during this most trying time in our country. I appreciate the efforts the county is going to in order to keep us informed. That having been said, I am most disappointed that there is not complete disclosure of all the items that will be considered on the agenda for the meeting on April 7th, 2020. Item 13D does not have an exhibit displayed on the website. My first concern is that we are not being told the need for this to happen now. My greatest concern is that in these very troubled times, you are wanting to pull money from fund balance to pay for something that I don't believe could be classified as an emergency. I fully support the need for the morgue that is listed on the agenda. Unfortunately, it will most likely be needed very soon in our county. Please keep priorities straight and do the same thing that vast majority of the citizens in this county are having to do. Be very wise with what you agree to spend our money on. Please choose needs, not wants. Thank you, and may God bless us in all these trying times." And that was the only public comment received, Chair.
Okay, thank you, and we thank you for reading that public comment into record as well. So that concludes our public comment section of the agenda. We'll now move into item 15, which is the approval of minutes. Um, on February the 4th, um, we have a regular Board of Commissioners' meeting, uh, minutes. On February 18th, 2020, we had a called BLC meeting, uh, regarding an executive session. On February 18th, we also had a regular Board of Commissioners' meeting. And on February 25th, 2020, there was a budget workshop meeting. Are there any changes or recommendations made to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, I can't see Commissioner Holmes. Um, so at this time, we now open the floor for a motion, um, to approve the minutes of those stated meetings. Okay, I see Commissioner Thomas, um, that made, and I think I heard Commissioner Clemens, is that, as a second? Okay, yes, okay. So we have, um, uh, Commissioner Thomas at motion, Commissioner Clemens that made the second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands, please. Okay, that, uh, I didn't see Commissioner Holmes', um, hand, so, um, so, um, again, um, seems like that was the majority. And so I asked the county clerk, um, just for clarity, to read, um, that motion and a vote, please, for record.
Commissioner Thomas made a motion to approve the minutes read. Commissioner Clemens seconded, the motion was approved 501 with Commissioner Holmes, it's not voting.
Okay, all right, thank you. So at this time now, we're moving to the Commissioner comments, and, um, at this time, we'll open up for any comments from Commissioners. So anyone at this time would like to make any, um, comments, please raise your hand. Okay, the only, um, comment that I have, um, again, is to, I want to commend the, um, the EMA Director, Mr. Don Ash, um, again, all of our first responders, um, who are out there working to continue to keep our, um, community safe and protected, and also the, all of those that are working on the coronavirus task force, which includes, um, our hospitals, the school systems, and all other stakeholders, um, who are working to really, um, keep us, uh, safe during this time of COVID-19. Um, I did receive some, um, comments from the, um, Chamber of Commerce that also, as we all are concerned about our small businesses, um, but we're encouraging small businesses, if you would, to, um, uh, the Henry Chamber of Commerce, along with the, um, Convention and Visitors bureaus and the Development Authority, has launched a TogetherForHenry.com to provide information and updates to employers and residents in the county. And this includes webinars and podcast relief efforts, as well as tools for working remotely and handling stress. Um, next week, the Chamber is going to be coordinating another webinar to provide information and support of employers, including loans and grants, um, as we all continue to be so concerned about, um, our small businesses and also those who are seeking employment. Um, at this time, again, we just, um, encourage everyone to continue practicing social distancing, um, continue to, um, stay in contact, um, with our Henry County Communications Team, uh, for all of the great information that is out there. And I do ask that, um, we continue to thank those who are in prayer, um, for our world, for our nation, for the state, and also Henry County. So those are my comments for the day. Are there any other comments, um, before we move into the upcoming meetings and events? Um, uh, uh, County Manager, Chair Matthews, you may speak now.
Yes, Chair Wood, um, as you move into the upcoming meetings and events, I wanted to make you and the entire board aware that at this time, we currently do not have any cases or business items that have been submitted for the April 21st meeting. So if it is the will of the board, I would ask that you all remove that meeting from your agenda, um, because we don't have any items that have been scheduled or requested to be scheduled, um, for that meeting. That's all I have at this time, Chair.
Yeah, um, the only, uh, thing that we can also, I'm, I'm good with that, provided that, um, our shelter-in-place is the only item, I think, that, um, I think expires on that day. So if there's no changes in the shelter-in-place, I am good with canceling that meeting. But I think we need to be prepared that if there's any developments, as things are changing rapidly, um, that we may have to have a meeting on the 21st. And if we do so, um, again, I almost requested we do it at 9 o'clock AM, if at all possible. Again, um, we'll, um, at this time, I want to hear from the other board members before we, um, act on that. So any other comments?
I think that's a, um.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, you go first.
Um, a smart thing to do, Chair Wood, we will expect to hear something from our governor by the 13th. And so based on what the governor does on the 13th, that will give us some direction so that we can be in compliance with the statewide, um, you know, shelter-in-place that he'll do on the 13th. He may lift it, he may extend it to March, and so I think that it's, it's smart of us to wait to see what the governor does.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas, I saw your hand as well.
I was agreeing with, what was stated, and I do agree we should wait, we should, uh, absolutely cancel, unless he was the governor's going to do, and then make a decision.
Okay, thank you. So again, we'll hold it in place, but again, just, um, be prepared to, um, act upon whatever orders come, um, from the governor. So thank you much. Okay, Commissioner Clemens, yes?
Can we just put it, um, as an emergency meeting as needed and not, and put it for the morning? That way citizens know that it won't be a 7 o'clock, it's not our traditional normal meeting for the 21st, and it will be to discuss, uh, removing it or leaving it in place or extending it, make it so that way we know that we have some, a placeholder for that particular event.
Okay, well, let's do this. Um, I'm now going to, um, request that we modify the agenda to discuss, um, to accept a motion for the April 21st meeting. So do I have a motion to, um, modify the agenda, um, regarding the, uh, April 21st meeting?
I'm on.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Clemens', uh, motion, I saw Commissioner Thomas second. Any further discussion? All in favor to amend the agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, I see everyone, don't see Commissioner Holmes. Okay, so now, um, the agenda has been amended for a, um, resolution regarding the April 21st meeting, so the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that the April 21st meeting be a 9 AM meeting to, um, address the issues of the shelter-in-place.
Okay, so thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Clemens and a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, looks like we're all there, and again, we do not see Commissioner Holmes. So, um, County Clerk, will you confirm that for the record?
Sorry, I muted myself. Um, uh, Commissioner Thomas made a motion to modify the agenda to discuss the April 21st meeting. Commissioner Clemens seconded, um, the vote was 501 with Commissioner Holmes not present. The second motion is to approve having an April 21st meeting, um, changing it to 9 AM to address the shelter-in-place. Commissioner Thomas seconded, the vote was 501 with Commissioner Holmes not being present.
Okay, well, I think we did, I think you captured both motions, but again, I think we wanted to make sure that the confirmed motion was that Commissioner Clemens made the motion, um, regarding the April 21st meeting at 9 o'clock to discuss shelter-in-place, and Commissioner Thomas seconded, and it was a, um, 5, uh, oh, one vote. I mean, a 500 vote, because, um, Commissioner, uh, Holmes is not on the, on the record. So do we have that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, and thank you for, um, the modifications of that agenda. So we'll now move into the other upcoming meetings and events. On May 5th at 9 o'clock AM is a regular Board of Commissioners' meeting, which will include a public hearing to receive comments from citizens regarding the FY 2021 budget. And then on May 5th at 6 o'clock PM, will be a called budget meeting for a public hearing to receive comments from citizens and consideration of adoption of the FY 2020 budget. And again, we're hoping that we're very past, uh, COVID-19, so that we'll have our regular meetings, um, in person. But at this time, I do want to say thank you, um, Board of Commissioners for, um, continuing the business of the county for our citizens and keeping the focus of priorities. So at this time, we accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barn, and then a second by Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussion? All in favor to adjourn, please signify by raising your hands. And again, um, that was a 500 vote and a link. Thank you again for practicing social distancing at all times. So thank you again, thank you for your prayers as well.